I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to our wonderful city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, Mr. Foyce that contacted me earlier said he'd be running late tonight, so he'll be able to make it. So if you would please join me right now in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by Ward Two Council member, Mr. Bruce Jacobs.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights and liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the January 7th, 2009 regular session.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. And first up on the agenda, I would like to call Latonya Graves up, please, for our All right, I'd like to read our City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. changed our nation forever through his leadership, service, and clarity of vision, on Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday, we honor the lasting legacy of this great American, remember the ideals for which he fought, and recommit ourselves to ensuring that our country's promise extends to all Americans across this great land. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life strengthening the content of the American character and called on our nation to live up to his founding principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all its citizens. And whereas Dr. King's faith gave him the courage to confront discrimination and segregation, and he preached that all the powers of evil are ultimately no match for even one individual armed with eternal truths. Through his determination, spirit, and resolve, Dr. King helped lift souls and lead one of the greatest movements in history for equality and freedom. And whereas our nation has made progress toward realizing Dr. King's dream, yet the work to achieve liberty and justice for all is never-ending. We must continue to protect the rights won through the sacrifice of Dr. King and other civil rights leaders. Our nation must never rest until equality is real, opportunity is universal, and all citizens are empowered to realize their dreams. And whereas, as we observe Dr. King's birthday, I encourage all to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Let us live out Dr. King's teaching as we continue to work for the day when dignity and humanity of every person is accepted. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby call upon all citizens of Waterloo to join in the national observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, January 21st, 2019, and encourage all to observe the day with appropriate civic, community, and service programs and activities in honor of his life and legacy. So Latonya, what's going on?
Well, we will be celebrating our 40th Annual Martin Luther King Banquet, and our guest speaker is going to be Vivica A. Fox, and we are looking forward to having an awesome time. Tickets are like through the roof. And so, again, it will be held at Electric Park Ballroom, and that is Sunday, January 20th, and social hour starts at 5:00, and the dinner program will begin at 6:00.
You have something on Saturday as well?
Yes, on Saturday, we are having a meet and greet, and that is going to take place at the Brown Derby, and those tickets are $75, but she will be doing a book signing, and there will be hors d'oeuvres and pictures, and so we're going to have an awesome time.
Is the book included as?
Yes, the book is included in that price, and so if you're interested, all you have to do is give me a call, 319-214-3434.
All right, thank you. And in the proclamation, it says a lot about liberty and justice and the American character. So we want to thank you for all your work with the NAACP and in higher education for making sure that you're educating the people of tomorrow today. So thank you so much, and we look forward to attending the banquet on that evening as well.
So now I must go off and continue working.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, and we have an incredible treat this evening. Every year, our partner in ed, the Dr. Walter Cunningham School of Excellence goes through, and they do an amazing job with caroling throughout City Hall and with their other partners. And this year, because the dates were a little bit different, we weren't able to get them here prior to the new year. And so Mrs. Steed has the carolers here, and they have a special song for us they're going to sing, so if you would please bring them up. Their backs will be to us. Hey Jessica, should they be facing the audience who think? So yeah, if you want to come up?
The song that we have for you today is called "Harambe," and Harambe in the African-
Mrs. Steed, could you speak into that? It may fall.
Oh, how about that? Harambe is the song that we have prepared for you this evening. We took it caroling, and we sang it in the City Hall, and we loved it because it sounds really good downstairs in the marble hallway, by the way. And Harambe, in the African language, means to get together, to work together. And so you'll hear us sing "Get It Together Harambe," and then several verses in between. And this is a song that honors Kwanzaa, the special African-American celebration that follows Christmas. So this is Harambe.
(Music) Get it together Harambe. Get it together Harambe. Get it together, get it together, get it together Harambe. Tell the people Harambe. Tell the people Harambe. Tell the people, tell the people, tell the people Harambe. Get it together Harambe. Get it together Harambe. Get it together, get it together, get it together Harambe. Help your brother Harambe. Help your sister Harambe. Help your brother, help your sister, help your brother Harambe. Get it together Harambe. Get it together Harambe. Get it together, get it together, get it together Harambe.
All right, Mrs. Steed, we thank you so much for being here. I know everyone is anxious to get home to do homework.[658.19][658.19](Laughter) And I'm sure because they came here tonight, there's no homework tomorrow, right?[666.94][666.94](Laughter) So you young ladies, thank you so much for blessing us this evening, and we will definitely continue to try to get it together Harambe. So thank you very much, and thank you, parents.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It is now time for oral presentations, your opportunity to address the council on issues close to the heart. So if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, we're here to listen.
Seems to be went ahead and came before y'all and complained about streetlights. River Road is still a mess. Six lights from Blackhawk Creek to Conger, only two out of the six are still not working. Somewhere along the line, they ended up screwing up the wiring somehow because when you're on the other side of Blackhawk Creek going towards the downtown area, three more lights have gone dead. Also too, there are several bridges from Park Avenue all the way down to 18th Street on both sides where the lights are not working. Also too, if anybody wants to be able to do any traveling outside Waterloo and want to fly, they got less than 15 days to do it. Because of the federal government shutdown, voices like TSA, the air traffic controllers through their union PATCO will be shutting down. And so, and apparently I see you got some travel on the budget, and you need to see about if it requires any flying to get it done before 15 days. Because you're going to have city officials, maybe clear across the country, that are going to be stranded and no way to get back.
Thank you.
Also too, the IRS is shut down. The only returns that will be given priority is those who electronically file, but do it quickly because there's limited capacity. And if your return is rejected, you won't get a confirmation number when you submit it. And that's basic, and but it's a real inconvenience that it's going to hurt the budget if there's any federally funded programs that the city had requested money for and haven't gotten their money yet. It's going to be a long wait because everything's shut down in Washington.
Yep, thank you very much. Yeah, we do have a couple of programs, and we're hoping to have that support. So thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I noticed on the financial page of the agenda that the Cedar Valley Coalition is held in Washington DC. I'm wondering why the Cedar Valley Corporation, Cedar Valley Coalition is held in Washington DC, and we have to spend that money to send someone there. Also, with all the federal mandates hanging over our head, and the paper had Waterloo cash reserves shrinks again, is it not time for you to start tightening the belt? Suggested areas, improved department deficiency, reduction of departments holding the wages this year. I know that many of the people that work for the city are doing the same job as someone in the private sector to get a very better benefit, or better wage and benefit package than those who work for a private sector, been there. I would suggest that we consider going to a merit system rather than just because you're there, you get a raise. Why can't we work smarter, not harder, and get more done in less time? This allows one to move on to the next project, the next needed project quicker and get more done. That's efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd Obedall, 124 Amity Drive. At the last meeting, during the discussion of the items that needed to be voted on three times, the rules were suspended. It was brought up that there's no need to not suspend the rules if nobody comes up in opposition to anything. I wanted to take the time to state that I have a complete opposite view of that, that these items are required by state law to have three votes unless the rules are suspended. That gives the opportunity for the citizens to have time to look and investigate and see if there is anything that's out of order here. Just in the last couple of days, we have a story about our own Secretary of State that didn't quite follow procedures on something that was pretty important, and maybe a little bit of time ahead of time would have alleviated a lot of difficulty that's going on now. I'm all for measuring twice and cutting once. I don't believe that anything that is required to have three votes should be forced through outside of extraordinary extenuating emergency circumstances. During a regular council schedule, three votes means an additional two weeks, and that gives the opportunity for people to take a look at what is actually in there and make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is have been dotted. In our last special election, our new councilman said very appropriately that we are representing, the council represents all of your districts, all of the city, and not just a few people. Give the opportunity to everyone in this town to take a look at council, council business, and council agendas, and not just the people that are tight with the city, and not just the people that spend a lot of time following what's going on in the city. This is a process that should be open to everyone, and you know, not everyone has the opportunity between Friday afternoon and Monday evening to take a look at what's on the agenda and clear out a time slot and come up and speak against something. Please ask that the use of, the suspension of the rules be used judiciously, and that be kept in mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council, going a second time?
He motioned to close the hearing, receive comments, and place on file.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
He make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place it on file, and approve it with 1A1, the dollar amount of bills being $1,781,231.31.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is Camille Burkle here? Want to stand up, Camille? We want to thank you so much for accepting the position of events coordinator. I know Kent is probably very glad to have you right now. So, yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about it. But we want to thank you so much for your service to the city, and we look forward to a long, healthy, and prosperous employment while you're here. So thank you. All right.[1195.83][1195.83](Applause) Then is Jesse Crane here? Is Jamie Knutson here?[1207.65][1207.65](Laughter) Jamie, you want to stand up? Jamie has been appointed to the, as the city engineer for the City of Waterloo. Over the past several months, we've had an opportunity to see how he deals with the sensitive nature of the issues that residents face in the City of Waterloo. Been very flexible to taking a look at different alternatives and ways of doing things. So we appreciate that, and you know, we have high expectations, so you'll be hearing that. So thank you very much.[1245.51][1245.51](Applause) All right, is anyone else? We need to show. All right. Eric Donat is not here. All right, let's go. Yes, sir.
Item number two is adopting a resolution approving a ward of bid to Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $80,300, and approving the contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the Riverfront Stadium Group's seating boxes project, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion is made with a second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the City of Waterloo, Iowa Small Cell Design Guidelines and authorize city clerk to publish said guidelines.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, if we...
Do you want to overview?
Well, I am for the folks that didn't get a chance to see the work session.
All right, would you like an overview first, Mr. Dreyer, before you come up? All right, so is Eric in the audience? So just to let folks know, this was something that we probably had a week or so to actually try to put some teeth into. We had a work session a little bit earlier where Eric explained in a little bit more detail, and here now is Eric again to give us a little bit more detail about this.
Eric Schrader, city planner. Since we did have that work session, I'll try not to, try and be a little more brief, but the small cell design guidelines proposed. First off, what is small cell? It's part of the wireless communications infrastructure. So the previous standard was kind of your more typical 100, 200, 300-foot tall tower covering a larger area. The new technology is going to a small cell. It's a much smaller antenna and a smaller equipment package that they will look to co-locate if possible on shorter infrastructure, generally speaking, 50 feet or less, streetlights, electrical utility poles, potentially street signs if they're the taller highway-type ones, or potentially building new utility poles for these things to be co-located on. That's what small cell is. Last year, the state legislature passed some regulations that kind of deregulated what cities could do regarding small cell infrastructure, opening up the right-of-ways for these things to co-locate in. And then just recently, here in December, the FCC issued an order that kind of took that a little bit further, placed a shot clock timeline for how quickly cities and counties will have to issue permits for these types of infrastructure improvements in the right-of-ways, limiting fees that can be charged, and restricting design standards and prohibiting design standards if they're not adopted by the community in writing. So that's what we're here for today, is to adopt a set of standards. If we don't have those design standards adopted today, the FCC order goes into effect, and we will have no such standards by which we could review incoming requests for placement of small cell infrastructure. If we get something in place, we can come back and amend it in the future. This was passed mid-December, goes effective today. Yeah, we didn't have a lot of time. We didn't find out about it until, I think it was January 3rd. We took, Dubuque is passing a similar provision, so we kind of looked at theirs and utilized theirs in large part, and tweaked it a little bit to try and tailor it for the City of Waterloo, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions?
All right. I think Mr. Dreyer has a question for you.
I was unable to attend. Mr. David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I wasn't unable to attend. However, when I read this in the paper and then I pulled up the criteria on it, I have a problem with my internet on Fourth and Ainsborough, and I see that one of the least preferable locations is in the residential area. Granted, I have a high V across the street from me, don't know that that qualifies for the commercial and industrial areas, but my equipment is supposedly functioning, yet almost every morning I have to reboot my internet to get internet service. So I don't understand why we can't put the residential areas in a preferable area. Because when you have a problem, and you're paying a pretty good fee to get that internet service, yet you want to restrict residential areas. I was also looking at the idea of all of these containment facilities or pieces that would be some sort of nice-looking box around, or not box, but like landscaping around it. I have a big box that takes care of the signal lights on my corner. It's ugly, but yet now we're going to restrict these people to make sure that they make it look nice. I don't want to more around a whole bunch more stuff on my corner around that big green box, but it looks ugly. So why are we making these people make everything look fancy? It just doesn't make any sense that we would put restrictions on them that the city doesn't have restrictions on itself. That also brings to, in part of this, it was that it doesn't want to block the view of traffic, et cetera, so they can't put something that looks, that's going to block the view. I'll guarantee you that big green box that's there is blocking the view of people coming down Fourth, coming up on, coming up on Fourth or down on Ainsborough, and you can get an accident there because somebody ran the red light or whatever, but they can't see what's coming from the corner if they're in the wrong position because of that big green box on my corner. So if we're going to restrict what they do, then we better clean up our own act. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So Eric, again, for the folks that were not able to view the work session, so Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, Iowa City, all of our comparable cities are all dealing with this tonight or virtually tonight. I mean, they had, I think we're all kind of scratching our heads on how it is that we got virtually no notification of this.
Eric Schrader, again, yes, I assume they are. I know Dubuque has. I assume there are other cities scrambling on this as well. As to, yeah, why, I don't, I don't really have an answer for that. The FCC order was sometime mid-December. I don't really know, you know, what the rules are on how those, I mean, I know it has to be published in the, like, the federal register. So how it then funnels down from once it's published in the federal register to most municipalities hearing about it is probably different in each municipality, occurring around the holidays, probably slowed down that rate of filter, but yeah, having a January 14th deadline certainly didn't help.
And if we do not act upon this tonight, what
And if we do not act upon this tonight, what happens?
So if this were not approved tonight, we would have no design guidelines. So for whatever period of time between now and when guidelines potentially would be adopted, or if they're never adopted, then any proposed utility, small cell utility locates proposed within the city of Waterloo. The city of Waterloo, you know, would have the, essentially that structural and safety review mechanism. In other words, if they're proposing to co-locate it on our existing light pole, can the light pole handle it? Or if they're proposing a new pole, is it in a location that's not going to cause a safety hazard visibility or something like that? We would still have the ability for that type of review, but we would have no ability to review for any sort of design or aesthetics criteria to ensure that it matches. So in other words, in our downtown area, everything is, from a new construction standpoint anyway, is generally done, whether you're talking the street lights, the traffic signals, street signs, all, generally speaking, done with metal poles of a black finish. We would not be able to limit to that, so someone, you know, one of these could go up as a wood pole.
And then finally, several of us were contacted by a concerned citizen about potential human damage or, you know, I don't know that radioactivity is the right term, but things we've heard about other cellphone providers, some of the potential health hazards. Can you speak to that?
Only, only a little bit. I don't really have any direct knowledge of that. I know, going all the way back to a act that I think was from like nineteen ninety-six, cities and counties were barred from regulating cellular service based on any concern that there'd be any sort of health hazard essentially created from the cellular signals. So this small cell is no, we've always been prohibited from regulating based on that concern. That doesn't change with this. And this proposal here provides some design standards, so approval or denial of this really has no bearing on that. If this is not approved, we'll have no design standards. We can adhere to them, but they'll still be coming. They'll still be getting built in our right-of-way. And based on recent legislation and the FCC order, we will have no ability to change that. This is, as I understand it, this is the wave of the new technology of wireless communications. One other comment on a previous comment, this is not internet like your cable internet provider. This is cellular, your phone service. The small cell is designed primarily to increase data usage, but that's data usage on your cellular service, not an internet provider.
So in other words, if we don't vote in favor of this, we're giving up control? Or if we vote in favor of this, we're retaining control?
Or at least retaining some control to put some design aesthetics on it.
Because these are going to be up everywhere. You know, whether we approve it or not, they're going to be everywhere. This is, this is the newest technology and this is how cellphone providers are able to increase booth signals. It's going to be everywhere. Whether or not we have the ability to have just a little bit of say-so in the design, that's what, that's what we're talking about here.
And just to address one other comment, this does not prohibit it in residential. It does set a preference for industrial first, commercial second, and then residential, but it does not prohibit it in residential. And realistically, they're going to be going after the more dense populated areas anyway because that's where they need that additional coverage.
Mrs. Klein?
I'm just curious about how, in what manner we were notified.
I got an email from the chief financial officer, who it's my understanding, got an email from, I believe, someone from the city of Dubuque, who was quickly trying to implement something similar.
Yeah, this wasn't, this wasn't, I'm trying to look and see where I got it, but this wasn't something where the city dropped the ball. I'm assuming that there are multiple cities that will not get something in by this timeframe. But this wasn't one where we dropped the ball or forgot to get a report in. This is us receiving this in a timely manner, getting to work, researching other communities across the state, across the country, to see what they're doing, and at least try to put something in place to have a small amount of parameters. Because it's our ability to regulate or any of these things, as Mr. Morrissey mentioned a little bit earlier, is becoming less and less. This is our opportunity to put at least a little bit of minimal design when they get ready to build something.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Did, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Eric, so one of the topics that we talked about earlier was putting it in the right-of-way, you know, on utility poles and that. This does not exclude putting it on private property as well, these.
That is correct. It would not exclude that.
And would the city have any involvement in those if they were on private property?
If they are on private property, they could potentially then fall under our zoning ordinance. They're essentially excluded from that under the small cell ordinance within the public properties, but if they were to go on private properties, they could potentially fall under our zoning ordinance. So zoning ordinance has an entire section on cell towers. But again, if they co-locate on an existing structure, as long as they meet standards of the zoning ordinance, it's considered a minor significance, which means they can just get an administrative permit.
So does the zoning ordinance have to change some language?
We will review that, but I'm not sure that it would need to. But we can definitely review that.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we have very little time to do anything with this. That's one of the objections I have with this whole concept. The other, I mean, it gives us very little time to review this. And another thing that's upsetting about this is that if the federal government and if the state government are creating rules and regulations that are basically being promoted by private businesses, and then restricting the public from what and how they can regulate their enterprise on public property, that upsets me. And it should upset everybody, I would think, anyway, especially when we're not allowed to have any input in that whatsoever. And another thing, I understand that we have to basically pass this. And it reminds me of, of things that have happened just recently, resolutions and that, consent agenda items, where you have businesses where, that are, and I'm just going to use this as an example, where permits, licenses for alcohol are put out there, but you've got neighbors that are complaining. They don't want those businesses established there. But as long as they're established, as long as the rules are set up, there's nothing we can do about it. And we just found out that recently, in the last six months or so, when it come down to a certain business that wanted to get established over there in Ward Five. And so it's, it's like our hands are tied, even though we object to it and the public objects to it, we still can't do anything about it because the rules are set up, so that you can't do anything about it. And then the last thing that I mentioned is that, you know, this is public property, except for the fact that it's put on private property, which I'm glad to hear there's some zoning there. But I object to the fact that they're trying to tell us that we can't charge them rent for putting their money-making equipment on our public infrastructure, Mr. Mayor. And, but I know I'm going to vote for it because at least we'll have some, some say in it. Thank you.
So Thursday, January third, Mike Van Milligan from the city of Dubuque sent it out to the Metro. So the agenda had already been set for Monday, and there wasn't anything that we can do prior to that. So we got this done as quickly as we can, as safely as we can, as expeditiously. And as he mentioned, we would have something on file that at least is consistent with other communities, and it's been examined to see how it works for the city of Waterloo. This does not mean, in the near future, that this document cannot change, but we need to get something on there. And our legislative sessions should be very lively as well. So any other questions? Yes, sir.
So that was my question that Council Morrissey brought up, too, is we have a one hundred and sixteen-page document. Basically, the FCC has decided that private companies could come install small cell towers at will in our backyards, which I'm all for internet and connectivity, and I think we should, we should get that done for our business customers as a tool to draw them here. But is there absolutely no way that we can charge rent, or we can charge a fee to be there, an annual fee? Can we not make this an income-producing venture for the city?
Schrader was the city planner, again. So we cannot make it an income-generating venture. The FCC order made it explicitly clear that any fees that a community charges for these facilities has to be cost-based. So if we anticipate that we're going to have actual costs, the administrative costs of processing, the review and issuance of the permit, the, like, a one-time permit fee has to be cost-based. We can charge an annual reoccurring fee if there are anticipated costs that we're going to have. So if we own that light pole and now anticipate it's going to cost us more to maintain that pole since their equipment is now on that pole as well. They put what they referred to as safe harbor dollar amounts that they suggest, if you charge a fee that's under that amount, it will be presumed to be cost-based and therefore acceptable, and therefore not likely to be challenged. But even technically, those are supposed to be actual cost-based.
So as a follow-up, then, could we, I'm sure other cities have thought the same thing, could we look at some best practices of other cities that have actually probably taken offense to this as we are right now, and responded back with a cost-based fee to go monitor, to do the permits, to make sure that they're in compliance, or there's going to be a zoning question here and there? Can we look at other ways to generate some fee income out of this, since they're imposing on our right-of-ways installing all this stuff on public and private land at will?
Yeah. So the city has a, like, a, I'm not the expert on this part, but like, a fee for work in the right-of-way, which the few that have been installed already to date have just gone under that, and I'm not sure what that fee amount is, but it's relatively small. So we don't have a fee structure proposed as part of these design guidelines, but we anticipated that in the near future, we would bring forth a fee structure specific to small cell placement.
So what we're voting on tonight would allow us to incorporate a fee structure after the fact?
Absolutely.
Based on whatever we find out in our research?
Yep, absolutely.
And is that something that you could look into, to see what we could do for a fee structure and put our best foot forward?
One other real quick question. Eric, League of Cities, have they done anything about this at all?
So in reading the FCC ruling, I know that the League of Cities were a commenter and opposed to the order, but their, you know, full involvement, I'm not aware of. And, you know, it does seem a little surprising that the communication kind of was fairly late in the game for...
And that's where I got it from, we got it from Mike with the Metro Coalition, and it had on there urgent, January fourteenth, it needs to be taken care of. Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of what I was getting at. I wondered all along if the notification shouldn't have come from the League of Cities.
This was part of the email chain that came from. It didn't come from the leadership. It didn't come from David or Robert, but it came from them. It hasn't, it wasn't part of our conference. It hasn't been part of the overall dialing, nor was it a conversation today during our discussion. So this is, if you, I mean, not to, and I'm trying to stay away from the politics of all of this, but in reality, more and more things are being infringed upon cities, and we basically have to figure out how we deal with it. I mean, do we need to talk about fireworks? And very little parameters, but do we need to talk about the fact of what was mentioned earlier with regards to, you know, liquor ordinances and the fact that we have no ability to be able to regulate some of those without being turned? So I don't want to get too political, but, you know, this is one of, this is one of those situations. But we have a very small window to ensure that we at least have some guidelines and parameters under what we can, in a very limited ability to be able to regulate. So it'd be nice to be able to vote on this. Do we?
Yes, sir. Just one clarifying point. Eric, did you not say that the FCC order didn't come down until December?
It was mid-December. I think technically, that's probably when it was actually published in the federal register. So I don't know, you know, the actual date that they did the order, but I think it was when it was published, that's like, kind of, that sets the clock in motion from it becoming effective and set up the January fourteenth deadline. And there's like, I think it's an April fifteenth deadline to publish.
All right, let's take a vote.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes, ma'am. This is the last comment, and then either vote no or vote yes. But, yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Christiansen, seventeen oh-two East Mitchell. Each of you received two sheets of paper this afternoon on this small cell, five-generation it's called. It's a microwave. And I have a comment. Yes, Mr. Morrissey, you can do something about this. I'm going to read you a paragraph that says, "The fifth and newest generation of cellular technology is being rolled out across the country, but some California towns are blocking over safety concerns. The San Francisco Bay Area town of Mill Valley, home of some Silicon Valley tech company employees, is the largest and have passed ordinances to effectively block the deployment of small cell 5G towers in the town's residential areas. The ordinances are driven by community concerns over health effects of the 5G wireless antennas." And I have additional information that says, "This will cause rare brain tumors and heart tumors. This is twenty times, or two thousand percent, microwave technology than what has originally been out." Yes, this is a health concern, and I'll get on my knees here and plead with you people not to put this through tonight because this is very important and it's, it's a serious illness for everybody that's concerned, whether it's, it's private or on private property or otherwise. So you need to vote this down and you need to do an ordinance that blocks this because they've done it already. And this pushing this stuff through so fast is ridiculous. The citizens need to have time and the federal government should not be allowed to tell us what we can do in this city with you people or with us or anybody, and make the decision right away so that it's passed without anybody knowing what's going on. So I ask you, please, 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 not vote this tonight. Vote it down. Let's research it. Make an ordinance to cancel this for our area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four, please? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Amos?
Number four is, "I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time an ordinance approving a request to vacate a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot portion of Bluff Street right-of-way located between West Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street, subject to the retention of a utility easement over a portion of the area to be vacated."
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops. That was a roll call vote, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. Pick it up next week. Uh, number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number five is a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate sixty-five thousand four hundred and ninety square feet of foot portion of Airline Highway west of thirty-seventy West Airline Highway.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. No, we're still good? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing on an order assessing civil penalty for Ray's Supermarket in nineteen seventy-five Franklin Street, Waterloo, Iowa, at five oh seven oh three for the sale of tobacco to a minor first offense.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the order assessing civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars to Ray's Supermarket, nineteen seventy-five Franklin Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the sale of tobacco to a minor violation first offense.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, um, ask how the process was handled here. Uh, I did talk to this person and, uh, this is their very first offense over several years of operation. It was a new employee that, uh, this has caused to happen. But, uh, I want to see how the business owner was notified and if we followed up with them before we issued this, uh, action tonight.
All right, Mr. Jellif, Zellifer, Chief? I don't know which one.
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. Every once in a while, the Waterloo police send a, an officer and a, and a young minor out to a place like this and they give the minor a twenty-dollar bill and instructions to buy something that they're not allowed to buy unless someone requests an ID. This is for compliance, this is for safety, to keep the kids out of the stores from, uh, buying tobacco and alcohol products. Most of the stores, uh, go quite swimmingly and very well, but in, in this situation, the minor gave them the money, ordered, uh, chewing tobacco. They gave him the tobacco, gave him their change back and the police officer watched the entire thing happen in plain clothes. No ID was ever asked for and they sold the tobacco products to a minor. Same as the next case too, just to save you all some time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so I understand that part of it, uh, and that's fine. I think we all support that action by the police department. But my question is, the business owner claims they had no idea that they were then to pay this fine. So if they were handed something at that time, were they ever followed up with before we then initiated this action tonight?
We sent them letters and we, we told them what they could do and, uh, never got a response from them.
So we sent them several letters?
At least one. I know the police officers tell them right at the scene what their rights are and then, uh, our office sends a letter. So, uh, uh, this is not uncommon to be ignored in these situations, so.
So the, the person called you today?
Yes.
So they knew they had a fine?
Well, uh, they did not know they had a fine. They were, they are glad to pay the fine and they should pay the fine and I don't disagree with that. But to, to bring this on to them then, uh, to, to make this, I, I think it would be nice to call them and just let them know that this was coming to counsel, that if you don't pay your fine, we're, we're gonna penalize you two weeks for not selling the product going forward. I think we, more communication would have been in order.
All right, anyone else with any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, add to that, that, um, in our consent agenda, I believe that one of our things that we voted to approve was pretty much the same exact thing, if I'm not mistaken, a three hundred dollar fine. So, yeah.
Uh, the consent agenda one is somebody who's already paid the fine. We're just voting to accept it. They got their notices and, uh, agreed to pay it. They already have paid it.
Yes, I just wanted to make note of that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Anyone? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Will abstain.
On what reasoning?
Possible conflict of interest.
Cause that determines whether or not we should have had a conversation about it.
Well, I wanted to ask about the general process of how we notified customers because we, or business owners, because we have a couple here.
I can, I can show you all the letter we sent them back on December seventeenth. It's three paragraphs explaining their rights and all that. And, uh, this is something we do all the time and if they didn't get it, I don't know why.
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. Number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to open the hearing on an order assessing civil penalty for XO Food and Liquor, four twenty-eight Franklin Street, Waterloo, Iowa, five oh seven oh three, for the sale of tobacco to a minor first offense.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this particular item, uh, for, uh, the sale of tobacco to a minor? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a boat, a motion to adopt a resolution approving the order assessing civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars to XO Food and Liquor, four twenty-eight Franklin Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the sale of tobacco to a minor violation first offense.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Abstain.
Business relationship?
Yep.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn to executive session regarding collective bargaining pursuant to twenty point one six.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Uh, Mr. Zellifer?
Hey, Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. I have the right to advise the counsel in this matter. We are discussing labor negotiations, which, uh, you have a section, Iowa Code Section twenty point sixteen, but we need to add to that Iowa Code Section twenty point seventeen point three. So, uh, they're both, they're both involved. They, they're together. We are allowed.
All right, um, Madam Clerk, roll call vote to adjourn executive session.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.